Good evening, welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Session, November 13th, 2018.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham is in Arkansas this evening visiting her family, so she will not be here tonight. And for those interested in the public hearing on the appeal of the HPRB Review Board's decision on HPRB number 1813, the appellate is requesting once again that the council continue this public hearing until December 11th. So this was properly advertised, so I will open the public hearing in the comment, or for comments if you're here for that item later in the meeting. Next, we have a couple of minutes for approval. Is there a motion to approve the October 16th work session minutes?
So moved.
Second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the October 23rd public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. We have several presentations this evening. First up is a proclamation to honor Dr. Gerald L. Gordon, President and CEO of the Fairfax County Economic Development Authority. And it is my great privilege to read this proclamation. "A Town of Herndon, Virginia Proclamation Honoring Dr. Gerald L. Gordon, President and CEO Fairfax County Economic Development Authority. The mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, express their sincere respect to Dr. Gerald L. Gordon, who is retiring after 35 years of dedicated service and support to the businesses and residents of Fairfax County, and as President and CEO of the Fairfax County Economic Development Authority. Dr. Gordon started working at the FCEDA in 1983, and since that time, office space in the county has grown from 32 million square feet to more than 117 million, and jobs in the county have grown from 243,000 to more than 600,000. During his tenure, Dr. Gordon helped to bring 6,500 technology companies and 10 Fortune 500 companies to the county, including Capital One, Northrop Grumman, and Hilton Worldwide Holdings, among many others, transforming Fairfax County into a major worldwide job center. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, express their appreciation to Dr. Gerald L. Gordon for his support on matters directly benefiting the town of Herndon, including assisting with our town economic development initiatives, serving on the town's Economic Development Task Force, the recruitment of Amazon Web Services to town, and promoting the town and Fairfax County as business and technology centers. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia, express gratitude to Dr. Gerald L. Gordon for his valuable service as a community and regional leader, express admiration to Dr. Gordon for his integrity and effective leadership, and, on behalf of a grateful community, we wish him much success in his future endeavors." So with that, congratulations, sir. You've been certainly a great friend to the town for as long as I've served the town. I'll never forget the first meeting right after our very first election. We came down to your office, and I knew immediately that we had a friend in you. Amazon Web Services was a huge, a huge get, and you were instrumental in that. And I'm going to see what else my colleagues would like to say, but we are grateful for your service, and we're going to miss you terribly when you move. He's getting out of Dodge to like Charleston, South Carolina, or something awesome like that. So congratulations to you. Who would like to speak? I'm sure everyone would. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate Dr. Gordon on his retirement, and I want to mention that the broader issue tonight that I thought of is that the town of Herndon has benefited from the services of Dr. Gordon. And I'm reminded that the recognition of Dr. Gordon's work also reminds me that the town, Dr. Gordon's work benefits Fairfax County and the incorporated part of Fairfax County, including the town of Herndon. So I'd like to thank you for your excellent public service, and I'm glad I got a chance to introduce myself to you tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
I've had the pleasure of not only meeting you on numerous occasions, but you have come to the Herndon Rotary and given very wonderful talks about what's going on with economic development in the area, and our Rotarians have always been interested in that. And then when I went through Leadership Fairfax, there you were. And as a member of the Committee for Dulles, the program you gave in the last six months with your counterparts in Prince William and Loudoun County were just very enlightening. And Herndon is just a tiny bit of what's going on in Fairfax, but everything you talked about with what's going on with Fairfax County is relevant to everything going on in Herndon, maybe on a much smaller scale. But thank you for all you've done, and I am so pleased that I have gotten to know you over the years. Thank you, and all the best.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Friedrichs, followed by Mr. McKenna.
So I first met Dr. Gordon when I worked for the Chamber of Commerce in member relationships. He was invited to speak at a small meeting that included Robert Simon, Bill Lauer, and Michael Fry. We were discussing how to turn Chantilly into the kind of town we have in Herndon, and he essentially said, "It can't be done." And that's why we like him. And in the, in the many times that I've had the opportunity to hear him speak, he has always been very modest and implied that he was not funny, and that is, could not be further from the truth. You have a dry wit, and combined with your support of business community and your help in diversifying the local community away from just being a military provider, I don't think we can even imagine Fairfax County without you. I'm having trouble myself. So I want to thank you for your, now I discover, 35 years of service to the county that doesn't even look possible, and thank you for never being dull.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, obviously, economic development is the backbone of everything that goes on in a community, and I think many of us are here because of that. I started working at Oracle in 2011, and shortly thereafter moved to Herndon from Alexandria. So a byproduct of the work that you did is in direct correlation to why I'm here today. So just know that it's the small things and the, the big boulders that you push that make sure that everyone here is where they're at, and we're grateful for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I would add to all that. I was thinking about the fact that Fairfax County has more people than at least one state, at least Alaska, probably maybe more than six states. Thank you. I was like, there's probably a lot of states. Fairfax County has 1.1 million people, so more than six states, more than the District of Columbia. I mean, it's a huge task, and really to think about the transformation, what was already mentioned in the proclamation, I think you've helped us be Silicon Valley East, right? I know for Mr. McKenna and others, technology is my day job, so that's a huge part of what had me locate here and stay here, and all the employment opportunities. I'm so glad we've also added our own Economic Development Manager to really focus on what we needed within Herndon, and your support and encouragement of that role, so we appreciate that. And it's been a pleasure working with you. We'll look forward to what's next. And Charleston is one of the few cities I, I've been meaning to go for a long time, so now I know I have somewhere to stay. See you then.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues. I was thinking back to right after my first election in 2010, when I, when I called your office and asked to speak to you, and I was expecting to maybe get on your calendar, and you came to the phone and said, "Jerry Gordon," and I'm like, "Oh, my God, what do I do?" But you've just always been that accessible, and we appreciate you coming out. I know there are many accolades for you in events, and we're just grateful that you took the time out of your busy retirement schedule to come out and let us, let us cheer you on a little bit. We have several special guests here that would like to speak. Supervisor John Faust, did you want to come forward?
Do you want to give a rebuttal?
You get the last word. Make sure everybody remembers that.
I've been waiting for this opportunity. No, first of all, thank you to the mayor and the council for recognizing Dr. Gordon's contributions. He has been amazing, and I'm not going to repeat everything that's in your proclamation, but I will say, he's done a lot for the town, he's done a lot for the county, but he really has done a lot for the entire region. I mean, we had a really huge economic development announcement today, but for the leadership that Jerry Gordon has provided over the years, bringing attention to Northern Virginia through his recruitment of so many Fortune 500 companies. Those types of things don't happen. He has raised us to a level where we can compete with anybody, and for that, I'm extremely grateful. I, I do want to say that the Washington Business Journal had an article, and it said the five things that make Gerald Gordon successful. And they were, you know, like, "He works hard, he knows everything there is to know about economic development." They left out, in my opinion, and I really believe this, his personality and his sense of humor. I think that he can crack groups open, and, you know, he's just the nicest darn guy to work with. And I'm really going to miss him, and hopefully he'll come see us occasionally, but if he doesn't, I understand he's in South Carolina. So anyway, Jerry, thank you. You've been amazing. Everybody here owes you a great debt of gratitude. You've had an amazing career, and I hope you have a really super retirement. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'd also like to invite forward John Boylan, President and CEO of the Dulles Regional Chamber of Commerce, to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an honor to be associated with the Fairfax County Economic Development, but more importantly with Jerry. Dr. Gordon has been wonderful, and as you mentioned, the proclamation about some big fish that were caught and brought here, but the true testament of his leadership is he didn't just catch the fish, he taught us how to fish. And so with the Chambers of Commerce, we learned how to fish through his example, and I know there's a special place in his heart for Herndon. We've talked about that, and I think he's been a real special leader, and we wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As is our tradition, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and say a few words? Yes, sir. Mr. Burt Whistle.
Thank you very much, Mayor Merkel, and members of the council. I am David Burt Whistle, and I'm here this evening representing my colleagues on the Herndon Economic Development Advisory Committee, and Arthur Nochman's here, as well as John and Dennis, of course, who works with us. The committee would like to acknowledge the service of Dr. Jerry Gordon in his 30-plus years at the Fairfax County Economic Development Authority. The FCEDA is the gold standard municipal development program, and under Dr. Gordon's leadership has grown the county's reputation as the best place to establish and maintain a business presence. Working closely with the staff of the FCEDA, the town of Herndon has benefited from the aggressive business recruitment and retention programs, as well as the unmatched international presence that, under Dr. Gordon's watch, has brought great investment success to our region. Some of this is repeating what your proclamation said, but since joining the authority in 1983 and becoming its president in 1987, office space in the county has grown demonstrably, the number of jobs in the county substantially, and most important, the real estate taxes decreased from $1.47 to $1.15 per hundred dollars. In 2007, Time Magazine called Fairfax County "one of the great economic success stories of our time." Is it any wonder? You know, today was a big day for this region with the Amazon announcement, and although it didn't come to our community, one can often make a good argument for the fact that because of the, what the work Jerry has done at the FCEDA, it came to this region, and I think that, that has some bearing on the, on the decision. So as Jerry prepares to turn this page in his life, spending more time in South Carolina beginning in 2019, it is a privilege for me to stand before you this evening on behalf of the economic development in the town of Herndon, to wish him well and thank him for all the service to this community and the region. And on a personal note, I worked with Jerry for 10 years, over 10 years, at the EDA, side by side, and I can't tell you how happy I am for him as he makes this change in his life, and wish him all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward and congratulate Dr. Gordon? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Jerry, it's great to go out on a wind, isn't it? Jerry's office was a block away from mine when I was working in Tyson's Corner, and at noon, I was in my car, and I was heading over to Tyson's Corner to have lunch, and the traffic is just unbelievable. And who do I see off, walking in a ditch? I see Jerry. And I said, "Jerry, do you need a ride?" He says, "No, I'm just trying to prove that Tyson's Corner is a walkable community." So what some people don't, don't realize, and hasn't been brought up tonight, that, Fairfax County Economic Development is international. It's one of the few counties in the world that have, that have offices, you know, across the shores. And through this man's work, we all benefit. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Wow, they were really nice, Dr. Gordon. Do you, do you want to speak before the presentation? We'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and, and other supervisor Faust, David. I was going to say that I've been at the EDA long enough that I remember when David Burt Whistle worked there, too. But, and apropos of the, of Arthur's comment about walking in a ditch, I actually was interviewed on the side of the road one time with traffic screaming past me, and someone saw me and called my son and told him that he had seen me standing on the side of the road, and Brian said immediately, "Was he reciting the alphabet backwards?" That's different perceptions. I have enjoyed my 35 years in, at the Economic Development Authority and in Fairfax County, and not the least of which is because. There are so many different places in Fairfax County that are different and unique, and, and you can find whatever kind of lifestyle you want in Fairfax County, but you can only find that small-town feeling in this larger urban area here in Herndon. My first introduction to Herndon was through my daughter-in-law, who was, who grew up here and went to Herndon High School. And I never really had seen Herndon in a different way than through Tracy until I started to get involved with the town. And I, one night, went home and told my wife that when we moved to Virginia, if I had known about Herndon, that's where we would have moved. People are friendly, it's a nice hometown feeling, events are exciting, and the kids are always happy. But I, council members come up and talk to me and remember my name. I think that's impressed me a lot. And where else could, would I get a chance to have the mayor walk me through town and show me all the development opportunities, only here in Herndon? So I, I'm just deeply appreciative of everything, allowing me to be involved with you over the years, and, and for this evening. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Well, I would like to invite down the entire council, the town manager, town attorney, Dr. Gordon, and any of your friends and family who are here, Supervisor Faust, John Boylan, members of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and anyone on the staff or others that would like to join us for the presentation.
Everybody to the right. Dr. Gordon?
Right up front.
I don't think so. I'm going to bring you. Go ahead, take a picture with Marshall.
White copper.
And you thought I was a problem. Okay, stay. Okay. Nobody move. Just big smile.
2018, and I will recognize Councilmember McKenna to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, December 7th, 2018. Each year, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day is designated throughout the United States to remember and honor all those who died or were injured in the attack that occurred at Pearl Harbor near Honolulu, Hawaii just before 8:00 a.m. on December 7th, 1941. In this attack, more than 2,400 American military personnel were killed, and more than 1,200 were wounded. The attack on Pearl Harbor destroyed nearly 200, 20 American naval vessels, including eight battleships and almost 200 planes. December 7th, 1941, was a date that would live in infamy, as President Franklin Delano Roosevelt told an anxious nation after the attack. On December 8th, 1941, Congress approved President Roosevelt's declaration of war on Japan. Three days later, Japanese allied Germany and Italy declared war against the United States, and Congress reciprocated. The mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia proclaim December 7th, 2018, as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day in the town of Herndon, call on all citizens to honor this day, which marks the 77th anniversary of the attack of the United States Armed Forces at Pearl Harbor, pay tribute with the appropriate observances and activities, and express unending appreciation for the selfless sacrifice of those who served, fought, and lost their lives during this war. Further, the mayor and town council of the town of Herndon, Virginia proclaim that the town shall annually observe the 7th of December as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, salute World War II veterans along with their brave, those brave individuals who serve and continue to serve our armed forces, and thank them for their courage and dedication to our country. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Mr. McKenna.
Yes. This day, it's, as it, unfortunately, it's the 77th anniversary, so more and more people unfortunately are passing away. I believe it's 372 World War II veterans are passing away on a daily basis. 418,500 civilian and military personnel lost their lives in the United States for this war, and it was a true world war. Many, you know, obviously, fighting for England, you had the Asian Theater, which included India, troops from Australia. It was a truly unified battle, and we have to remember that there, this was where we truly had evil in the world. My father was 11 years old when war broke out, and two years later, he lost one of his brothers, and a year after that, he lost his other brother. So I have two uncles I don't know. And I keep thinking about the burden my father had, because he was the youngest and the surviving son, what that must have been like, and, you know, the gratitude we should have, and also, you know, not just for the military, but World War II veterans, again, we're losing them at, you know, 372 a day. So if you see someone who has served in World War II, please thank them, and, and thank the military for everything they do, because it's a solemn day, but it's one we need to keep in our hearts, because it was a day that changed the world completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs.
So I know I've mentioned a number of times that my husband was in the submarine service. I had the opportunity to meet a number of women, actually, two, the number was two, who grew up in Pearl Harbor and were actually there on the day that it was attacked, and I will not forget their description of what that attack was like for them and their families. And one of them, then subsequently, her husband was at the Pentagon on 9/11. So these things happen in, in our history, and it's important, never forget to take into account the experiences that people have had, and to hold your loved ones. So I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I'm going to encourage everyone to take a moment on December 7th, and turn off the phones, and turn off the computers, and just take a moment and remember the sacrifices of the U.S. service personnel and the families whose lives were destroyed or adversely affected by this attack on Pearl Harbor. I'm certainly going to do that, and I hope everyone else will remember this day and, and recall the bravery of our service personnel.
Thank you. Ms. Olem.
Yes, this, this day greatly changed my parents' lives. They were both, I guess, in middle school, and so they started drafting people, and my father wanted to join the Navy, and his older brother, the Air Force, so they decided the best way they could do that would be to graduate a year early, so then they could join the arm of the service they wanted. And on, on my father's case, he was able to be deployed to Hawaii after, so of course, I guess that's like going to any place that had been devastated like that, not like it is today, but it just greatly changed his life, even though he wasn't there when that happened. And just knowing a lot of the individuals that were there from their community, I think it just always made a big impact, and they always told stories about this when I was growing up, especially during December on Pearl Harbor Day. So I will be taking a moment as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, my aunt, my dad's oldest sister, was a nurse during World War II, and so this has certainly always been a day for us that we acknowledge and recognize. I think as we look at what's happening today, where the ideology that we saw, that we fought against in World War II, we see a resurgence of some of that ideology throughout the world and even in our own country, and it's more important than ever to never forget, and these proclamations are an important reminder of that, and I appreciate, Mr. Kaufman, what you said, that we should literally sit and remember on that day and acknowledge the importance of that moment and how that changed.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues. This is one of the proclamations that we do without fail every year, and it's important to thank our veterans and remember days like Pearl Harbor, because it shaped us as a country and certainly changed a lot of lives. We are prepared to present this to the American Legion. I'm not sure I see a representative from the American Legion, though. I know that they are, there was a conflict that Mr. Womack had, so, okay. Well, with that, instead of, we won't do a photo op, we'll make sure that we present this to them as soon as possible, and definitely before December 7th. Thank you. Finally, it's the Good Neighbor Award, and I'll recognize Barbara Glakis from the Cultivating Community Initiative to introduce our winner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of town council, I'm Barbara Glakis, and a member of the town's Cultivating Community Initiative. So in this season of thanks, I'm very happy to be here this evening to present this year's winner of the town's Good Neighbor Award. The Good Neighbor Award is meant to recognize citizens within neighborhoods who have gone over and beyond the call of duty to help out their neighbors, and who do things to make their neighborhoods a better place to live. Members of our community do not make these nominations, instead, they come from Herndon residents themselves. So we are pleased to announce that this year's winner is Sonny Howe. So Ms. Howe, would you please come down and join the mayor in front of the dais? So Ms. Howe, would you please come down and join the mayor in front of the dais? If you could stand right up front here, I'll explain to you in the audience why Ms. Howe's getting this award. So when I told Sunny that she had won this award, she was very surprised, but also very honored and humbled. She told me she feels very blessed, and she told me how much she loves living in the Town of Herndon and how she enjoys helping people. She also wanted to give credit to her husband, who she says also does a whole lot of work. Sunny, your neighbors tell me that you're one of the original members of the Spring Park Station neighborhood, which is about 11 years old, and that you've served on the HOA board and have been a leader of the community every year, of community committees, I should say, every year. But moreover, your neighbors tell me that you reach out to so many people in a variety of ways. You check on people who are sick and bring them food. You visit neighbors who are elderly and lonely and take them out to lunch and invite others to go along as well. You organize community projects such as the annual community cleanup day, and you perform a lot of the work yourself. If people need plants, you go out and get them. If people need helpers, you round them up. In short, you facilitate connections between people, which helps foster community spirit and promotes the idea that neighbors need to get to know each other and to take care of each other. So one of your neighbors said, quote, "Spring Park Station would just be a group of townhouses that people lived in and not a community without Sunny Howe," unquote. So Sunny, you represent what the Good Neighbor Award is all about. Thank you so much for having such a big hand in making your neighborhood such a great place to live. Congratulations.
Are you guys misbehaving up here?
No, it's not, actually, so.
Oh, somebody airdropped me a picture. All right, that brings us to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Earlier today, we received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association that we will once again receive the distinguished budget award for last year's or the current fiscal year budget. We will be presenting it formally at a future, at a future town council public hearing, but I wanted to draw attention to the fact that we, in this budget, we took a great deal of effort to try to recraft the document to be a better communications tool, to be a better fiscal planning tool, to do more fiscal forecasting, and kind of streamline it and make it more approachable, both for you as decision-makers and the citizens, if they decide they want to pick up a, what used to be a 500-page document, that's now down to about 300 pages. But the amazing thing about this, I want to draw your attention to, is in the critique section, for the first time in recent memory, we cannot, we're going back and seeing how far back it goes, we have received no needs improvement on the document. It came out a clean reward from the GFOA. I wanted to draw your attention to that, and we will be talking about it in a future council session. Also, if those, those of you that haven't been paying attention to the news, we do have a weather event happening on Wednesday night, Thursday morning. Public Works has already started gearing up. Pay attention to social media channels and the town website and the like for anything that the town has to share with you on that event. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
I'm just exhausted from the past few weeks, looking forward to not knocking on anyone's door and having them slam it in my face, and I hope everybody else is relaxed and feeling better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Just a couple of things. Herndon Youth Advisory Council met last Thursday. We had Ms. Lisa Yates, our town attorney, speak to them in behalf of what the town attorney's role is in regards to local government. I thought it was a very good discussion and also learned a lot. And of course, Mr. Kaufman, thank you for being there in regards to being at that meeting. The other thing, Mr. Faust is not here, but Jenny Phipps, thank you for being here. Last week, the, there'll be more information coming out, but some bus routes were changed on the Fairfax Connector in regards to the schools, the middle school and the high school. They adjusted some of those routes. Part of that is because ridership was 19%. We had worked with a group, including Eileen Finley and some others, doing analysis. Fairfax County Department of Transportation looked at the bus routes because a lot of those kids use the connector buses to get to work, and to have that, it's a, it's a free service. I mean, it's subsidized, obviously, but students can ride that bus for free. There's other school districts that use it a lot more than we do, so there was, there would be an adjustment made, I believe, January 1st. We can certainly roll that out and show that, but I'm very happy about that, and I think it's a correlation too, to the $14 million add-on to the bus depot we have in town. It gives us the ability to be very flexible with those kinds of things, so I want to thank the supervisors for keeping that bus depot in town. So as we move forward with metro and everything else, we can do things like this, and I think it's very important that we have that. So I just want to say I'm grateful for the work on that and very excited to move forward. So thank you, and that's all I have right now.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Olem.
Thank you. Well, I too am glad the election's over. Thank everyone that turned out to vote, and I was glad that I got to go to a play this weekend. So if you haven't been, East of Eden is an excellent play that Next Stop Theater is doing. It's very intense, so it's not like a comedy or anything, but well worth seeing. When I walked away, I thought, thank goodness, my boys are okay, because that, those of you that went to the play, oh, wow, it was pretty heavy. The poor kids didn't fare too well in their life because of situations going on with their parents. Also, I put a Share Virginia Roads booklet out. It's a new thing that the Northern Virginia Regional Commission has put out, so I put a few of those out in case you want to learn how you can share the road with all of our folks that like to ride a bicycle, so we don't take them out. We would like to see them there. And if you're looking at weatherizing your house, check out the piece out there, and if you know someone in need of help getting their home weatherized, the Leap Virginia program can help people that might be in need of some assistance to get their house ready for the winter. And I did see DPW out today, picking up leaves in my cul-de-sac, and as usual, they filled up and had to go back out and empty the truck and come back again. We have a lot of really wonderful, old, big oak trees, so it takes them quite a while to get through our cul-de-sac, and we appreciate them very much with all the services they do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. On October 29th, 2018, I was able to attend the Metro Monday meeting that was organized by the Dulles Regional Chamber of Commerce, and I wrote down a few interesting facts and insights from that meeting. I'd like to share a couple of them with you. Herndon Station is 88% complete. The whole Phase 2 line will be completed in a year or two, quote-unquote. Then testing will occur and then the system will open, but it will open. Herndon Station has parking for 3,500 cars, which is interesting. At the airport, there's not going to be any metro-type parking. If you park there, you're going to be paying airport rates, but there's no parking then for metro at the airport. The Washington-Dulles International Airport is the only airport on the East Coast that has the ability to expand both cargo and passenger facilities. There's going to be a rail yard and maintenance facility in the 606 corridor. I think it's going to be basically out by the airport. That's 87% complete, and that will employ 300 employees. There are 51,000 jobs at Washington-Dulles International Airport. Passenger utility is growing at the rate of 3.75% per year. Cargo is growing at 2.7% per year. I concluded from all this that the Washington-Dulles International Airport constitutes a major economic, cultural, and transportational element that benefits not only the town but of Herndon, but all this region, and we're very fortunate to be located so close to this major facility.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
I concur. I will be there tomorrow for a short trip to New York City. So a couple of things coming up. I can't believe it's already Thanksgiving, a week from Thursday, so this weekend, on Saturday, is the Turkey Trot, the 5K Turkey Trot, if you're interested in that. November 30th, Art Herndon has their holiday party, and that's bring a pair of children's shoes, so they do a fundraiser with our local elementary schools, so please come to that. Again, that's Friday, November 30th, the week after Thanksgiving, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Art Space. Also, that same weekend, there's like three things going on, so you have Friday night, Saturday, come to the Holiday Home Store. This is literally one of my favorite traditions in town. I was the chair of this committee for a few years. I think this is such a fun tradition where they have five, there's actually six homes this year, they have a bonus home, so just a fun way to walk around, see some homes in Herndon that are decorated and just, it's just a fun way to sort of start the holiday season. And then the following day, on Sunday, December 2nd, of course, is the Craft Fair that the Herndon Women Club sponsors, and that's at the community center. Thanks.
Thank you. So on Sunday, we were pleased to attend, or I was pleased to attend, along with Mr. Kaufman, the Veterans Day Memorial Service on the town green, and I want to thank our staff who came out on a Sunday to make sure that that went off very smoothly. It was well attended. Thursday night, November 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Jimmy's Old Town Tavern, the Herndon Women's Club and I and Tommy McFly and Jen Richard and Kelly Collis from the Tommy Show are all going to be doing celebrity bartending at Jimmy's, and all of the proceeds are going to wreaths across America specifically for the Herndon Chestnut Grove Cemetery event. So again, that is Thursday, the 15th.
In two days.
In two days. And then on, I believe it is December 15th at noon is when the wreaths will actually be laid at Chestnut Grove Cemetery, so I hope that you're able to participate in one of those events. And I also wanted to take a moment to congratulate our two new council members that will be incoming. They're here tonight, Cesar DeLagula and Pradeep DeCall, are hiding in the back, but you won't get to hide for long, so make sure you get to introduce yourself to them and get to know them. So we'll be looking forward to working with them in the next term. Next up is comments from the audience. This is the portion of the agenda when you can come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item. That includes our general items or any consent items as well. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come down and speak on any item that's not a public hearing item? Yes, sir.
Petra Hermes, 92 North, Gunnar Port. To the current council members, I want to thank you for your service for the past couple of years. As many of you know, this election cycle has been very divisive with anonymous complaints against current council members and businesses not part of the election. For the sake of the community, we need to put this behind us. The town residents have spoken, and we don't feel this should be part of our community. And to Cesar, Signe, and Sheila, we understand why you filed the lawsuit, but for the good of the town, it's going to be a distraction. Please drop the suit so we can all move forward. I also hope that we put in place a strong code of conduct with a social media policy like most normal companies and many municipalities have today, because some of the things that I saw, I just are shocked by. I hope that all of you can work together for the good of the community to help drive more businesses to our town for the, there's many unoccupied and underutilized commercial properties that I think could be a great asset. I hope all of you support ASN Opening, because with our development that's coming, the apartments, we're going to need to drive younger people to Herndon because, and we need to find ways that Herndon becomes a destination for them, not just something to pass through, and it will help, hopefully help support our downtown development and sustain it for the long run. Lastly, and probably most important, I'd ask all of you to be leaders, talk to one another, learn from each other. Disagreement should be seen as a point of strength, and please serve for the good of the community and be selfless. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? Mr. Downer. You're gonna have to start sitting up front.
Well, a little bird leaned over my shoulder and said, are you going to say anything? Oh, you can see who's sitting behind me. You're going to say anything about the train show? And believe it or not, I do have flyers in the car. It's on December 8th and 9th, from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, or the public hours. We're very fortunate to have the T-Track group in the depot, and also the caboose will be open. The same thing, it's the 13th year we've, we've done it at various locations, but it's been same, five years, it's been always upstairs in the municipal center, and it's worked very well, and we hope everybody will come. It's a great family event, and if you have any friends, neighbors, anybody around that wants to see some trains, they'll, and it's interesting, the guys with the train show actually thanked me for putting it on, because they, they actually do the work and bring the displays out. And if, as you probably know, they're only, they're set up in modules, so you never get the same modules every year. So it depends on which, which ones come or what decorations they've done to it. So all, all three of them will be, the HO, the T-Track, and the Engage will all be in a modular setup, so, anyway, hope you'll come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not listed as a public hearing item? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Hi, Cesar DeLagula, 126 Fort Knightly Boulevard, incoming council member. Good evening. First, I would like to congratulate all the candidates who ran for the election for town council. It was a long and interesting election season, to say the least, and quite frankly, I'm honored to have shared the process with so many dedicated public servants. I would further like to congratulate one candidate who prevailed, my new friend, Pradeep DeCall. Way to go. Although he joined the late, the race a little bit late as a first-time candidate, I think he showed us kind of a new way to operate and how to energize and excite a group of people that probably should have been reached out to a long time ago. And again, I think his sincere platform and message was, was well received, so congratulations. Second, I look forward to serving the Herndon citizens with this outstanding new team. I truly believe change in leadership was desired, required, and ultimately will be great for the town. And in the interest of moving the town forward, I wanted to publicly announce that we've spoken, Councilman Olem and Friedrichs and I, and we've decided to set aside the lawsuit against Councilwoman Grace Cunningham. Though the suit was brought to draw attention to very serious and longstanding concerns of the residents and businesses, it's our hope that this good-faith effort, would, this gesture, will be received in the spirit in which it is offered. Our further hope is that the behaviors that led to this, led to us bringing this lawsuit, will stop once and for all, and that Herndon will be allowed to heal from this division of the past. Finally, I am humbled by the resounding support of this wonderful town. I was really surprised at the outcome, and I am grateful for the opportunity to serve. I was really surprised at the outcome, and I am grateful for the opportunity to serve the needs of the ambitions of this vibrant and diverse community. Thank you, Herndon.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Ann. I didn't see you.
Ann Veda, 631 Oak Street. Madam Mayor, members of the council, members-elect, my fellow citizens, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Hermus and Councilman-elect DeLaGula, for your remarks. With the election behind us, let's move forward. Let's leave the drunken frat house behind us by owning and accounting for errors in judgment, by upholding the ethical comportment, with ethical comportment in anticipation of a coming imposition of a town code of conduct. Madam Mayor, we citizens deserve a statement from your council enumerating what you can and cannot speak to due to pending legal action, and that to which you can speak, we deserve your words and your answers. Councilman Cunningham, wherever you may be, I urge the withdrawal of allegations against Herndon small businesses and that you cease and desist from further allegations for the good of Herndon. I have it on good authority that three incoming council members may magnanimously withdraw their suit against you, allowing all sides to focus on productive efforts for the good of our precious hometown. Councilwoman McKenna, to restore independence between council and planning commission, you and Ms. Jonas must resign. Madam Mayor, you must enforce their resignations and revisit issues tainted by their liaison. The good people of Herndon are most generous in their willingness to work towards restoration of our town's rightful reputation, and you may find some spillover in their restoration of your reputation. I encourage you to include my comments and all public comments in the minutes, or they could be posted on Facebook or blanket it all over the web in a podcast. Thank you. God bless Herndon, each of you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that is not a public hearing item? Thank you. No? This brings us to our first public hearing, which is Resolution 18G-53, Appeal of the Heritage Preservation Review Board's Decision on HPRB Number 1813, which is 864 Station Street. This appeal was originally scheduled for a public hearing on September 11th and was continued to October 23rd. It was continued from October 23rd to this evening at the request of the applicant. As I announced earlier, the appellate, the appellate's agent is requesting that council continue this public hearing to December 11th. Since the public hearing was properly advertised, I will open the public hearing, and shortly I will call for comments from the audience. Staff will forego the staff, the presentation of the staff report. There will be no discussion by council. Comments that have been received have been entered into the record. I do have a disclosure which I will make first. For the record, I am an owner of real estate on Eldon Street, which is in the Heritage District. I am able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney. And I believe there is another disclosure, Ms. Baker.
Yes. Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an owner of real estate on Herndon Station Square, which is in the Heritage District. I am able to participate in the discussion and action on this application fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Okay. Thank you very much. As I said, we will forego any comments from staff, but is anyone here to speak on this item? This is a public hearing, and I need to make sure I've opened, so the public hearing is open if anyone would like to come forward. Mr. Downer.
I forgot to give my address this time.
Oh.
My wife and I live at 815 Branch Drive, right across the way, Unit Number 308. I grew up in the house that's in question, and I made my comments last time, but I also want to see if there's any way the applicant will continue, consider the HPRB's request to use the vinyl look-alike on the windows. I understand that they have tried to do that, and of course, I know there's a lot of people been put out by having to come out tonight in anticipation of the applicant being here, and they haven't been for how many meetings now?
This is the second, yeah.
And so, I think we either need to give it, you know, bring it to a head or turn it down, one or the other. But anyway, that house has been modified, as I stated last time, considerably. The second floor has been added since I was there as a boy, and we just, I think we decided the other week that that does make it a historic structure. Anyway, it's a very nice old home. I questioned the, where it's shown on the workup for a contributing structure, it mentions brick, and to my knowledge, there's no part of that house that's brick. It also interviewed someone at the, next door to the house, not the owner of the house. So, I'm not sure how accurate all of that is on the old, the contributing structure form that was done back then. But anyway, it's been around a long time, built back in the 20s and then modified extremely. But I do sympathize with the Architecture Review Board in trying to make at least the windows look alike, even though it's been added on, and do the proper period for the house. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Yes, sir.
He talked about the fact that Indian Heritage Preservation District, or I mean, we all take pride when there is a district, and that we all have invested in this. So, that is one way of thinking about this issue. The other way, since then, I've talked about, I've thought about, is that we actually pay taxes, every one of us, no matter where they live, for preserving, for paying for the salaries of staff or hiring the, you know, Heritage Preservation Board members. We make our facilities available to them. So, there's a whole lot of money that is being spent in addition to the fact that individual homeowners can spend money, but that is not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about as a town, we spend the money on this stuff. So, everybody is invested in what HPRB does, what things are appealed, what things are not appealed, and I think everybody should have a say, should have the right to challenge regardless of where they live. I understand people who live very close to the district are perhaps more invest, more affected, but we all are affected by this. So, that's sort of one comment that I would like to make. The second thing I would like to add is that, over the years, we have taken away HPRB's authority to look at mass and heights and all that. I think that is unwise to do that. If a Heritage Preservation Board cannot comment on those things, then what is, what is it? Why is it there in the first place? We have many places, Tyler Street, for example, if somebody builds a home which is taller than, next to, which is taller than the old home, that might be very small. We have objections to that. And so, I think we need to think about, along with this, about the height, about taking away that main power of the HPRB at some point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on the appeal for 864 Station Okay. So, the public hearing remains open, and I will ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move Resolution 18-G-53 to be continued.
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor, and that is to be continued until a date certain of December 11th. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Discussion on that motion. I, the only comment I have is this, I've heard Mr. Downer's comment that we keep kind of pushing this down the road. If this does not come before us in December, what are our options, Madam Town Attorney?
Pursuant to the town code, one continuance must be granted. Continuances thereafter are granted within the discretion of the governing body. We do know this instance, the appellate was on travel. But yes, he certainly can make that decision at the subsequent or any subsequent.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to continue. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. We'll try again December 11th. Next up is Ordinance 18029, to consider zoning ordinance text amendment number 18-05 to amend Chapter 78 zoning, excuse me, pertaining to certificates of appropriateness and appeals of decisions to town council and appeals to the town, of town council decisions to Circuit Court. This item was continued from our October 23rd meeting for further discussion by the council. I will open the public hearing. Comments that have been received on this item have been entered into the record, and our zoning administrator, Dave Stromberg, is here for the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Merkel and members of council. So, tonight I do have Zota 18-05, and this is an amendment to revise the language regarding appeals of certificates of appropriateness in the Heritage Preservation Overlay District. This was initiated on August 14th and heard on October 23rd for public hearing, where it was continued until tonight. The need for this amendment became apparent as the downtown project was progressing through the development process. That project had multiple certificates of appropriateness for the demolition as well as for the new construction, and that multiple appeals had been filed of the HPRB's decision. So, that resulted in all those certificates of appropriateness being voided. So, staff is proposing to change the word "void" to "stay," and that will pause all administrative action during the appeal process, but it will not automatically void the certificates of appropriateness. So, that is the change to Section 78-60.3G7B. The other two proposed changes in this amendment are to Section 78-60.3G8. This is the section that regulates the process for appealing the town council's decision on a certificate of appropriateness to the Circuit Court. So, at this point in the life cycle of a certificate of appropriateness, it's been heard at the HPRB, an appeal's been filed, and it's been heard at the town council. So, this is the section of code that decides what happens next after that. The Code of Virginia requires localities to establish an appeal process if they have a historic preservation overlay district. In its most narrow application, a locality could limit appeals to only the applicant whose property is subject to that certificate of appropriateness. In its most broad application, a locality could allow, allow anyone to appeal a decision, and this is really how our ordinance functions right now. The proposal is to change the ordinance so that a person who has aggrieved and with a property interest in land abutting or across the street from the subject property can file an appeal, and that will go to the Circuit Court. This is consistent with the existing language for who can file an appeal of the HPRB's decision, and is also consistent with language from when the historic preservation overlay district was originally adopted. Staff also made a change to the last section in Section 78-60.3G8, and here we just added language directly from the Code of Virginia, clarifying that when a town council decision on a certificate of appropriateness is appealed, that there is an administrative stay. When the planning commission heard this item on October 1st, they made two motions with two recommendations. Planning commission recommended that the council approve parts of Zota 18-05 to replace the void language with "stay" in 78-60.3G7B, and to add the last sentence with the stay language in 78-60.3G8. Planning commission also recommended that the town council not make any changes to the appeal of a town council decision and refer that specific section back to the planning commission for additional discussion. The staff recommendation is to proceed with adopting the full amendment as originally drafted because it maintains consistency throughout the appeal process and it is an appropriate middle ground for that whole appeal process. So, with that, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions for Mr. Stromberg? Ms. Friedrichs?
I have had another number of discussions with, with people about the, the appeals, who can file appeals today, and one of them asked what Vienna and Stanton have, I mean, have you had a chance to look at their code?
I've looked at a few different ones. I'm not sure what theirs specifically are, but it's really all over the board for the localities that have a historic preservation district.
So, there's no best practices that are being followed right now in Virginia in historic towns?
It's not really narrowed to one. Again, most are doing their own thing, again, because the state does allow a locality to have it be as narrow or broad. Again, there isn't really one that's out there, and there's no policy from like the APA that says this is the best way to have that.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Mr. McKenna?
You alluded to the text language being changed, and then, you know, basically what we're doing is going back to the original text, if I'm hearing that correctly. What was the context in which that language was changed? Do you, do you know that?
It was part of an overall ordinance rewrite back in the 2005, 2006. So, when the ordinance was recodified, there were some smaller changes, and I, it looks like that's where it happened, is in that recodification of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Okay. So, this is a public hearing, so we'll call for comments from the audience. Once again, state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes. When the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come down? Ms. Hutchinson. I didn't see you over there. Excuse me.
Thank you. Connie Hutchinson, 1019 Van Buren Street, not in the historic district, but it is, it does surround my neighborhood. First of all, I wanted to make a note that in the, in the information that was handed out, there was no staff report that was part of this, the process, and there's no staff report in, in the written information that's handed out tonight. So, this is just anonymously because usually there's always a staff report, but there is none here. Second, I think this is wrong. The, this heritage, I mean, the planning commission did omit from their recommendations not, you know, they, they did agree to not take out the right of a taxpayer to appeal. It's very rare that a government takes away a taxpayer's right or anyone's right. So, I think you need to think about that. I think you need to make sure that because Herndon is, because we do have a Heritage Preservation District, we do have a history that's very special to everybody that, maybe not everybody, but most people that live here. I think taking away the right of a, of a citizen to have input in something that affects our heritage district is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Brenda Wickman, 925 Vine Street, also similarly surrounded by the historic district. I wanted to start by saying thank you to council persons Friedrichs and Olem and McKenna, in particular, Mr. Kaufman as well. I received your comments back to my email regarding my concerns about the language. I appreciate very much your diligence in following up. I understand you talked to Mr. Wickman in, in place of being able to reach me. Thank you. I just wanted to say that, as you know, my concerns were that the proposed changes had overly restricted, dramatically overly restricted, if taken at their precise wording, who could appeal. From my perspective, the text that is before you From my perspective, the text that is before you, I believe, strike, I believe, in my opinion, strikes the appropriate balance. Unintended dramatic effect. Thank you. As a homeowner, I believe that I should have a say, and perhaps, dare I say, more of a say than someone who doesn't live in my immediate area about something that directly affects my home, its value, and my literal investment in the town. So with that, I'm in favor of the returned language, and for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, so we will move to council level for discussion and action. Mr. McKenna?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance 18-0-29 to consider zoning ordinance text amendment Zota 18-05 as is.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation, just to clarify?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, made by Mr. McKenna and seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, several things in regards to this. I, you know, I certainly understand the concerns of multiple citizens regarding this, but I can say that I've actually met a lot this summer with people in the district, and, you know, obviously, we've had some things in regards to the RFP for the HPRB regarding what is going on, and there was concerns about consistency and some other things. And I think it's important that we have language that's consistent, and that doesn't become punitive, because again, it's not, it's about people moving into the district as well. If a family's moving in and wants to have a house that's historic, or even a business that's historic, you know, you would, you would hope that they're stalwarts, and the people around them would make sure that that's taken care of. I do know that the, you know, I've had several conversations with multiple people in, in regards to aggrieved properties and things of that. I'm comfortable with this because again, I just, I can appreciate the, the uniqueness of the HPRB. I mean, I've used to summer in Cape May, and I've been to New Hope, Pennsylvania many times, and those are all very wonderful places, and so is Herndon. But I do believe that this language as is will not affect that based upon some conversations, and, you know, there is recourse. So, you know, I don't think it's encompassing, and that's why I'm comfortable with the language as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I, I think the staff has done a good job in drafting the proposed ordinance. It addresses two major problems with the existing situation, namely the stay issue, which I think everyone agrees on, and it also addresses the appeal to the Circuit Court issue. Right now, the appeal to the Circuit Court is faulty because there's no requirement that any taxpayer, officer, department, or board, to use the language from the ordinance, be aggrieved. Everyone else would have to be aggrieved. So that's a major fault with the existing ordinance, because it's much too broad. I think the ordinance does a good job as presented in, in resolving the dynamic. Certainly, people who are aggrieved and who have a, a house or a property nearby, the subject property, should be able to go on to the Circuit Court, which is not a step to be taken lightly. The Circuit Court is a court of record, it's a major venue, and it's a hard row sometimes. On the other hand, we have to think about the homeowner in the Heritage District. If he or she is taken to court by a taxpayer, or by a board, or a department who's not even aggrieved, to use a legal term, then that's a burden on the homeowner. That's a burden on the, the good faith homeowner in the Heritage District, because going to the Circuit Court is a major imposition on someone, and should not be taken lightly. So I think the ordinance does a good job in resolving the dynamic here in favor of allowing legitimate appeals to the Circuit Court by people who are actually hurt or affected by the decision on the one hand, and yet protecting the homeowner in the Heritage District from overly having to go to the Circuit Court, overly having to litigate appeals that, that may be affected, that may be, that may affect their property. So I support the proposed ordinance.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, a couple things. One, I want to apologize to Ms. Wickman, because I was super delayed in responding to your email, because I wasn't at the last public hearing, but I know we've since followed up, so I do appreciate feedback that you provided to us. And there was, I also want to mention something. There were other folks that had responded to the council and talked about their concerns, and maybe it's because it was election season, I don't know, but there is sort of this conspiracy theory, or that there was a lot more that went on behind this. So I just want to address this. I think we've already sort of talked about this, but this really came up because it was, it was only brought to our attention because the appeal happened after the HPRB decision that was, happened in June, and then the appeal happened in July, and then we noticed, hey, you know what? And essentially, what those appellants want, wanted, which I talked to all of them, they wanted a forum in front of the council. And the way the current language read, it voided it, right? Their appeals voided it. That was not the intent, I think we all agreed, that was not the intent, that certainly wasn't what the appellants wanted. So that's really why this came before us right now. I know folks are just concerned about the timing, and that there seems something more nefarious going on here. That's why this came up. I just wanted to state that, that, and as we looked at this, and it's awesome having Mr. Kaufman on council, because he was, has a long history with this, you know, as we looked at it, we said, oh, there's a way to actually, we should probably, this language is super broad, and then we looked at the history of that, and that it, it was more scaled back than it was broad, about 10, 2006-ish, we think, and then it's, it, so the thought is, we should kind of come back together on that. And that there potentially, we discussed in quite detail during the work sessions, that there should be consistency with, when you can appeal to the town council as your first step, and then your second step would be to appeal to the Circuit Court. And the thought was, the same group of people should be able to appeal to those two bodies. It doesn't have to be that way, but that was certainly what, what many of us discussed, that there potentially should be some consistency with that. I certainly appreciate that any homeowner, we've heard from some folks in town who think any homeowner, anyone within the town of Herndon should have the right to do this, and as Mr. Kaufman already said, it's really broad right now. It's like a taxpayer. So we don't even frame in what you have to be a taxpayer of. I mean, you could be a taxpayer in the United States of America, and you could technically appeal this. Now, we know that's probably not going to happen, but regardless, that is the way the language reads today. So the thought is, we do need to put some parameters on that, and there, there were a couple folks that emailed us and said, it really should be any town of Herndon taxpayer should be able to appeal HPRB. And I think that's obviously what someone else already spoke on. My concern with that is if you look at, I know Herndon feels like this cozy little town, and so we all should just have a decision on that, but it would be very unusual in a jurisdiction like Fairfax County, to say anyone within Fairfax County, if, you know, if they had a historic district, that they could also, that any person within that county could appeal a decision. Because I think the critical part that Mr. Kaufman just brought up is that you do have to be aggrieved. And the reason that I'm comfortable with the language as it's written within the staff report is that I think what we're missing, we're talking a lot about, well, I want the ability to make sure that I can disagree with an HPRB decision, but most of these HPRB decisions are for homeowners, right? So what I'm concerned about is also thinking about that particular homeowner, and as someone who owned a historic property for years, if, let's say, I think to frame it as, what if I had gotten an approval, right, a certificate of appropriateness? I got that approved with the HPRB, and then potentially, anybody could escalate that to Circuit Court and say, I know you got it approved, and that's what you wanted, but I don't want you to have that anymore. I mean, that's, that's my major investment, right? That's my home. And so I think we also have a responsibility for those homeowners, not just everyone else, but those homeowners. So this is a tricky one, and I don't, I don't mean to say this is an easy decision, or that there's not valid points on, on both sides, and I do want to be really, we have, we have discussed a lot, I think, as a council, we've discussed it a lot individually today, since we didn't have a work session last week, so there is a lot of discussion, and I'm certainly open to continuing to hear from the public on this, but I just wanted to give you some frame of reference of why I'm comfortable with the language as it's written today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olem?
I'm not comfortable with the language as it is today, and I brought it up at the last work session and public hearing. The reason I'm not, the argument that it would cost the homeowner if someone appealed the town of Herndon's town council to the Circuit Court, because we had a homeowner that wanted to do something, and it came to the town council in 2014. The town council said, oh, that wasn't right, and so other homeowners, not the person that owned the home on Spring Street, came forward and appealed that decision, because these people had historic homes, and they felt like the town council didn't make the right decision. And it was never stated at the town council level why they made a decision to overturn the HPRB's decision. So when it got to the Circuit Court, there was no homeowner, other than the homeowners that had their properties, they felt like threatened, because they didn't want the Heritage Preservation District to no longer be upholding their rules. It was a tin roof issue, going from a tin roof to putting an asphalt. That's a huge difference. The homeowner that owned the home didn't pay a dime to go to that court. The town of Herndon's attorney went there, and we paid that bill. And then the other citizens that appealed that, they were the ones that paid it, but they felt like they were doing something for the historic district and protecting that. So it did not cost the lady on Spring Street any money, because she didn't pay for a lawyer. It cost the other homeowners. So if you were taking something, and your neighbor objected, and the town had said you could do it, and then they took it to the Circuit Court, that's not the person that was paying. So I think there's a little confusion as to who paid the, the bills on this. It wasn't the homeowner trying to get something done. It was the homeowner trying to protect the integrity of the HPRB. So with that, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
Is this the appropriate time?
Well, we're in the middle of discussion at this point, but you can make a substitute motion or an amendment?
A substitute motion.
An amendment, a substitute motion would be something more substantive?
I've got one, in writing. Is that what you mean?
If...
Just want to make sure I'm getting it right.
Mayor, are we entertaining that?
Sure. Okay, so, want to make a substitute motion. Excuse me, while I get my machine opened again, so I can see where I'm at. So, leave seven B the way it is, but then when we go to number eight, where the change So, starting at the very first of that, would be, "Appeal of town council decision to Circuit Court. The applicant, any person aggrieved by the decision with a property interest in land in the town, may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court of Fairfax County pursuant to Code of Virginia 12 dot 2 dash 2306. If appealed, a petition at law shall be filed, setting forth the alleged illegality of the action by the council, provided that such petition shall be filed within 30 days after the final decision is rendered by the town council." And then, what's in my pad in red, "The filing of the petition shall state the decision, which the town staff added."
So can you clarify, do you have the, your, your language in writing? Can I, can I see that to make sure we get it correct? So it's just the change to, "The applicant, any person aggrieved by the decision with a property interest in land in the town..."
Right.
"...not limited to the Heritage District, in the town..."
In the town.
"...may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court of Fairfax County." So the only change is striking the language, well, this is not what we're working from, so hold on.
No, that's something I had totally separate.
So this is the entirety of the substitute motion that you are...
Very top part, no, just the part that starts, "Appeal of the town council decision."
Okay, so the substitute motion is to pass the ordinance, seven remaining as the staff has, has suggested, and number eight would now read, "Appeal of town council decision to Circuit Court. The applicant, any person aggrieved by the decision with a property interest in land in the town, may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court of Fairfax County pursuant to the Code of Virginia," et cetera, et cetera. The rest of it is the same, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the substitute motion. Do I need to read it again for clarification? Are we clear? Okay. Ms. Olem?
Okay. We just had Jerry Gordon in here, Dr. Jerry Gordon, who, who talked about how wonderful of a community the small town of Herndon is, even though we are the third largest town in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We do have a hometown, Phil, and people that live in our town really value our Heritage Preservation District, even people that might not live in it. I'm not going to ever file anything, but if I was a couple of houses away, like one of the people that wrote us a letter, that their, their property doesn't touch, but they would like to have a say-so, as well as maybe you live six blocks away, but you live in a historic home, and you have protected that home, and it's integrity. I think they do have a dog in that fight, and I think this is a small town. This is not Fairfax County. We don't have 1.2 million or anywhere close to it, and town of Herndon is not as big as any state that I know of. So I don't think comparing us to Fairfax County is, is equal. So I totally support this, because I think this is a big part of our town, and if it goes away, I think it's a big part of our town that we're going to lose, if we're going to lose that heritage.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
So, I, I support this language. I'm not sure that it really completely solves the problem. Some of the people who've spoken to me have also mentioned the fact that they don't think that the, the initial, let's see, the people who can appeal to the town council is as broad as it should be, not meaning it should be very broad, but meaning that it is very, very limited right now. I have spoken with a lot of people today, and, and in the past few weeks, and I, I think it's really, really important for us to get the void language out, and put the stay language in, for everybody's sake. I'm not comfortable with taking away people's, I, I know that this is almost never used, and I don't want to take away people's right to use it if they really feel that they need to. I'm told that judges will throw things out if they are considered to be frivolous in this case, so I think that there's a good case to be made for us being relatively safe, but I know that there are alternate opinions on this, and I respect that. I would like to make sure that the language doesn't allow taxpayers in other parts of the country to...
That's exactly what I said, "in the town."
It says "in the town." I know.
So if we need to say "in the town of Herndon," that would be fine, but I don't think Reston should be included. I don't think New York is included, just to clarify.
So, Madam Town Attorney, should we add "in town of Herndon" to be specific, or...
That would be the third degree amendment. That would be the third-degree amendment to this motion.
Well, now, this is a substitute motion.
It is a substitute motion, but we're still getting to the third degree. Certainly, that can be, if someone is seconding that, that could be done. Originally, it was "town." Is that what it was?
So it should say the town.
The town. I believe it's implied that it's the town of Herndon.
I would say it's implied, too, but...
Okay.
We don't really have jurisdiction over places that aren't in the town.
Okay. So could I ask a point of clarification, Madam Town Attorney? This is a substitute motion. If this passes, then...
The body needs to vote on whether the substitute motion is going to replace the main motion. The main motion is Mr. McKenna's motion. That's the original motion. We now have a substitute motion that's been proposed, so that substitute motion would need to have a vote about whether it replaces the main motion. If it replaces the main motion, then we're talking about Ms. Olem's motion. If it fails, then we're talking, we're back to Mr. McKenna's motion.
Okay. I didn't think that's how we did substitute motions, but I learn something new every week. So then the motion on the floor is whether or not to consider this as the main motion?
Correct. So that's an up or down vote, essentially.
Okay. So the motion on the floor then is to consider whether Ms. Olem's substitute motion becomes the main motion, correct? Okay. So further discussion on that. Okay. All those in favor of, I don't know how to word this, this is not at all how I thought we've done substitute motions before, so I apologize.
So making that the main motion to be discussed and voted on for decision.
Okay. So all those in favor of making Councilmember Olem's substitute motion, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, become the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No. So that fails two to four, and now we are back to the main motion, which was made by Mr. McKenna and seconded by Mr., where was that? Mr. Kaufman. Discussion on the main motion. Ms. Olem.
Since the concern was that the homeowner that was doing the improvements is going to have to go to court, and that's not what has ever happened, the only time it did happen was when we had a homeowner, gosh, when was that, 2004 or '08? Some people were turned down and told they could not replace their roof with asphalt, so they had to use a tin roof, which it had, and so during a rainstorm, they ran out and replaced it, because they said their house was leaking, and the town did make them replace that. So yes, that did cost them a lot of money, two roofs and legal fees. But if someone across town files and takes it to the Circuit Court that has no interest in it, it's going to get thrown out. I mean, they just don't do that. So I think what we're talking about is limiting who can make appeals, and even if you live two blocks away, you have no rights. And I just don't think that's right in a small town.
Thank you. Other discussion on the main motion. Ms. Friedrichs?
I agree.
Further discussion. Ms. Baker?
Although, again, I do think what is, the change that is written is fair. I think the fact that folks do have a voice, no matter where you live, in terms of coming to a council meeting, coming to an HPRB meeting, I know that's not the same as being able to appeal. I think the potential for compromise, I'd be curious if I can ask this without putting a motion forward, of whether, instead of saying the entire town, but if we talk about...
You can ask for a point of information.
I'm asking for a point of information, of whether, again, to be, I think there's room for compromise here, right? I think, given what we've heard from both folks in the public and folks on the dais, that I think there's room for compromise. I'm not comfortable with the entire town having the right to appeal, but I think, and I think I certainly appreciate the HPRB, the district, and the sanctity of that district, and preserving that district. I've lived in that district. I still live in that, just the entire time I've lived in town, I've lived in that district. So I would be curious from a point of information, is that what I'm supposed to say? Whether other folks on council would be comfortable with, instead of saying the entire...
You're getting close to making a motion.
Okay, yes. Of saying HPRB. Do you want me to make a motion?
Well, I thought you were going to ask a question first. I thought you were asking a question about whether it could be changed.
Well, I know that it can be, right? Because I think we can, we could technically, you know, change from taxpayer or the entire town to the folks that have land, you know, with property interest in the Heritage Preservation District, correct?
Whatever, you know...
Well, so I will make a substitute motion then.
Okay.
All right. So I'll make a substitute motion. So again, keeping seven the same, in terms of how you can appeal to the Town Council, but having eight, let me try to do this. So eight would say, "Appeal of Town Council Decision to Circuit Court. The applicant or any person jointly or severely aggrieved with a property interest in land abutting or across the street from the property, or any person jointly, I guess we'd say jointly or severely aggrieved, again, with property interest in land in the Heritage Preservation District, may appeal." And then keep the rest the same. So my intent is to just add, to broaden it somewhat, and say, and keep that you still can be, sorry, I guess I should wait and get a second before I clarify.
Well, I think I would ask you if you intend to drop the "town" from that language, and if you intend to insert an "or" or a comma.
So the "town" in that language would refer to who?
The ability of the "town." For instance, there's been discussion tonight about the town attorney defending some other suit that occurred in the history of this town.
Okay. So by keeping the "town," so then I should insert the "town"? I didn't, I don't see it in...
Or the town being able to appeal.
I don't see it in the language in number eight as it is. It's not...
I'm sorry.
It's not listed on number eight. Am I wrong? Oh, "or the town," sorry.
It's the very last thing.
"Or the town." Sorry, I forgot that. Okay. So should I try this again?
Yeah.
Got it. So number eight, substitute motion, even though I talked to Lisa today, so sorry about that, "Appeal of Town Council Decision to Circuit Court. The applicant or any person jointly or severely aggrieved with a property interest in land abutting or across the street from the property, or..."
With a property interest in land in the Heritage Preservation District.
I didn't say that part yet. I just said the "land abutting or across the street." I just am reading, I'm reading this, number eight. This is why I don't like doing this at the dais. Well, we didn't have a work session. We all talked about this, that this was a possibility.
Is the intent to add the Heritage District?
Correct.
In addition to the other language?
Correct. That's all I'm trying to add, is I just want to add, "with a property interest in land in the Heritage Preservation District." That's the only piece I want to add.
Okay.
To number eight.
Okay. So are you, I'm going to help you here with the permission of the...
Please do.
Okay. So are you saying, "The applicant, comma, any person jointly or severally aggrieved with a property interest in land abutting or across the street from property, which is the subject of the final decision of the Town Council," comma, "any person having a property interest in the Heritage District, or the town, may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court of Fairfax County pursuant to," and then the rest is the same?
Yes. That is my substitute motion. Yes, thank you.
I hope you got that.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second, but I'd like to...
Once, well, okay.
And let me just add that we, I don't know that I said aggrieved, but jointly or severally aggrieved, for both of them, I understood you to say.
Correct.
For both the adjacent or across, and the land, and interest in land.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Is it possible for you to read that back to us in its entirety? We won't have it in writing, but we can hear it once again.
Eight, "Appeal of Town Council Decision to Circuit Court. The applicant, comma, any person jointly or severally aggrieved by a final decision of the Town Council pursuant to this subsection seven above, comma, any person with a property interest in land in the Heritage Preservation District who is aggrieved by a decision, a final decision of the Town Council pursuant to subsection seven above, or the town, may appeal the decision to the Circuit Court of Fairfax County pursuant to," and then it goes on with the language that was suggested by staff.
Okay. That was your intention?
That's my intention.
And Ms. Friedrichs, you're still seconding?
I am still seconding.
Okay. Discussion on the substitute motion.
Yes. Yeah, so again, as I started to say, I think, just given the concerns of the public, given that I've lived in that district, that I do think, and the fact, I'm comfortable with the fact that it's, we're keeping the language the same for who appeals to the Town Council. I think there's a lot of work and effort to appeal to the Circuit Court, so I'm comfortable with that being slightly broader, that folks within the Heritage District do have, preserving the Heritage District, I think they do have a voice in that, so I can see the benefit of them having a voice in that in terms of who can appeal. I'm also sensitive to the homeowners themselves, right, of the folks that actually own that property. Again, being someone that's owned property in the Heritage District for 14-plus years, but I think my goal in making the substitute motion is to find some common ground and compromise that I hope more folks can feel comfortable with.
Further discussion on the motion. Ms. Friedrichs.
So I think this is a nice compromise. I would, however, like to continue it, because I want to look at it some more. I know that's depressing to bring it on.
That's another motion, and we've gone...
Well, right now, it's a discussion.
No, if you want to continue it, it's a motion.
I'm discussing whether or not I'd like to continue it. So does any, fine.
Madam Town Attorney?
Well, the discussion needs to be germane to the motion that was made. Certainly, you can ponder your thoughts about what you'd like to do, but I was hearing that as a, as I'd like to continue as a motion.
Okay.
You're not making a motion, then.
Then let me make sure that a person who does not live in the Heritage, because I'm not sure I got it all, if, someone who doesn't live in the Heritage Preservation District, but who lives near the Heritage Preservation District, is this still, okay, fine, then I am supporting this. I think it's awesome.
Yay.
So I've got a question.
I have a question, too. I just want to make certain in Vice Mayor Baker's substitute motion, that any party that we have identified that is able to appeal must be aggrieved.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the applicant, any person jointly or severally aggrieved across the street or adjacent to, any person aggrieved with a property interest in the Heritage District or the town. I see that as four different descriptions of...
And they all must be aggrieved.
Entities aggrieved. Well, no, the applicant and town are probably clearly aggrieved.
Right, but the new language that we've inserted, we have aggrieved attached to both parties. Okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you. Ms. Olem, followed by Mr. Kaufman.
So are you saying if you live in the town, and you say you're aggrieved, you can appeal? So you're only saying if you live in the historic district, then you can be aggrieved?
That was the language of the motion, was...
That's, I'm just clarifying, because I don't have the language in writing.
None of us do.
Well, I know, but that's why I'm clarifying. I don't like to vote on things that I don't know what they are.
I concur. Can I add to that, though? Were you finished, Ms. Olem?
I wasn't finished, but go ahead and ask, and then can I continue?
You can continue now. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, if you'll stop jumping in there, I can finish a thought. Okay. So you're saying that only people in the HPRB can be aggrieved? So if I live across the street, I'm still aggrieved, and I don't live in the historic district? Because are we keeping the "across the street" or "abutting"?
Yes.
Because there are places in town where you might be abutting or across the street.
That was, that was the motion.
Okay, so that stays.
And is jointly or severally aggrieved with a property interest in land, abutting or across the street from property, which is the subject of a decision.
And across the street means what? If I live on Spring Street, and it's on the other side of Spring Street, does it have to be directly across five houses? I mean, it's, it's not...
Across would, could possibly be subject to judicial determination, as well could aggrieved be subject to judicial determination.
So aggrieved, you might not have to live in the HPRB.
I'm just asking the question.
If you're across the street or adjacent, abutting, I'm sorry, abutting, not adjacent, abutting. That was the language of the motion.
Yeah, I think it still cuts out a lot of people that might be of interest, but...
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
I think Vice Mayor Baker had a comment. I'll yield to her.
Sorry, I was literally just going to clarify, didn't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Olem. I was just going to clarify that it's exactly the same as eight, so certainly, folks that are across the street or abutting would be included, and again...
Whether or not that's the Heritage District.
Whether or not that's the Heritage District, and that's from my own perspective. Given my old house, I was the last house in the district, so certainly recognizing that, and I know some other residents had brought that up, too, that if I'm the last house in the district, but certainly, someone outside the district would still be very much impacted potentially by a change I made to my house. So I absolutely agree with you that that needs to be included in the process. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kaufman.
I think we need to remember that just because one is across the street or abutting the property in question, or under the proposed motion on the floor, just because somebody may be in the Heritage District, does not mean that that person can appeal to the Circuit Court under the proposal before us now. The person still has to be, quote, "aggrieved," unquote. And aggrieved, I'm not a lawyer anymore, I'm a town council member, but aggrieved means, quote, "a substantial grievance," and means a denial of some personal or property right, legal or equitable, or the imposition of a burden or obligation upon the petition or different from that suffered by the public generally, end of quote. So you could be in the Heritage District under the proposal before us now, and still not be aggrieved from a legal standpoint. So I think everybody should know that going into the proposed motion that's before us.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion, anyone? So, Madam Parliamentarian, our vote will be whether or not to consider this as the main motion, and then, once that is decided, we vote.
Correct.
Got it. All right. So if there's no further discussion, we will vote on whether to consider Vice Mayor Baker's substitute motion, which was seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, which adds the language to include aggrieved parties within the Heritage Preservation District.
Correct.
Correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
I'm staying.
Okay, so, 4-1-1, okay. So that motion carries. So now we will consider... So that motion carries, so now we will consider the, the substitute motion as the main motion, which was made by Vice Mayor Baker and seconded by Ms. Friedrichs, which is the same motion we just discussed. Further discussion on the substitute motion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Abstained.
So that.
I don't see it in writing, I'm abstaining.
Okay. So that motion carries with one abstention. That brings us to, I believe, our general item, yes, which is Resolution 18G63, to initiate consideration of a comprehensive plan amendment, number 1802, to establish a design concept for street improvements on Eldon Street between Sterling Road and Herndon Parkway. And Michael Wallach is here for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're here to discuss the initiating resolution to authorize public hearings on a design concept for Eldon Street between Herndon Parkway and Sterling Road. And just to clarify, this is a separate comp plan amendment. We did have a previous comp plan amendment that was for the South Eldon Small Area Plan, and that was really a land use plan, where this is really getting at the roadway improvements. Okay, so in 2017, the town applied for and was awarded a $65,000 urban development area technical assistance grant by the Virginia Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment. And the reason for this was to understand transportation needs associated with potential changes to land use along Eldon Street between Herndon Parkway and Sterling Road. And it was also an opportunity to prepare for and implement multimodal design along this portion of Eldon Street. And as one of the requirements of the grant, we established an oversight committee that was comprised of Signee Friedrichs representing Town Council and Michael Romeo representing Planning Commission. We also had town staff members on, on the Oversight Committee as well. So under the terms of the grant, the town must adopt policy relating to the work completed under, under the grant by October 1st, 2019, or we have to repay the grant funds back to the state. So this is why the street concept must go into the comprehensive plan as a comprehensive plan amendment by October 1st of next year. Okay, so this next slide here is an aerial, and kind of looking from left to right here, you're going south to north, so on the left side of the screen is the intersection of Herndon Parkway and Eldon Street. And the study area does include the intersection of Eldon Street and Alabama Drive, and then the project terminates at the intersection of Eldon and Sterling Road. So associated with this project, the town has applied for VDOT smart scale funds. We submitted this application in August of this year. VDOT is currently reviewing the concept plan that was prepared by, through, through this grant. So VDOT will inform the town if, if we've been awarded smart scale funds in spring 2019. We have a cost estimate that's at $16 million for the, for the concept plan that we've got. And the project, VDOT has initially said 2026, that there has been some delay to that, so it may not quite be 2026, but it'll be around then. And so the staff recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution to initiate consideration of the comprehensive plan amendment and refer this item to the Planning Commission for public hearing and recommendation through, via code, Virginia Code, Section 15.2223. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Nope. Okay, well, thank you very much. I will move to council level for discussion and action. Anyone? Mr. Kaufman.
Madam Mayor, I move the adoption of Resolution 1802, the proposed resolution and the staff report.
Okay, Resolution 18G63.
Right.
Yes, CPA number 1802.
G63.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Kaufman, Kaufman, and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Kaufman.
I like this proposed plan, and I hope the Planning Commission does, too, because it's certainly good for the pedestrians in our community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Olem?
Yeah, this is going to be a very important area once Metro gets there, and it'll really be an asset to the citizens living on that part of town, so that they, they can get to Rock Hill Road, and then we'll have to talk to Loudoun and Fairfax to put the sidewalks over there.
Exactly. Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I want to thank staff and Ms. Friedrichs for your work on this. I think it's something that's incredibly, it's, it's needed, because with everything going on around us, you know, we, we don't live in a bubble, so we have to, basically, part of figuring out things to do is everything that comes from the outside, so I think this is great, and just did a really great job on this, and looking forward to it.
Thank you. Other discussion, Ms. Friedrichs?
I also have to thank staff, because I really enjoyed working with you all on this. You did an amazing amount of work on design, you were good to work with, and I think we all know that the biggest issue that is involved in redevelopment is traffic, and multimodal transportation is one of the keys to solving that problem. So you guys did good work, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? We will get a great opportunity to rehash this once the Planning Commission works on it, and it comes back to us in a few months, so thank you very much. Again, the motion was by Mr. Kaufman, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Ordinance 18032 is up next, is to approve a lease of space in the town's building at 750 Center Street to Arts Herndon Incorporated. Comments on this item have been entered into the record, and I'll call on the Town Attorney, I believe, for the staff report.
Madam Mayor. This, essentially, this, the terms of this lease agreement, or similar, have been in effect between the town and the Arts Herndon Incorporated, and previously, Herndon Foundation for the Cultural Arts for the last at least 10 years. This particular, the lease, beginning with the last lease, was for a year only. It will expire on December 31st of 2018. This lease seeks to extend it one more year in 30-day increments to allow for the eventual redevelopment of the area once the property transfers. And staff is asking that you approve this lease. It's been signed by the Arts Herndon Board of Directors, representative of Board of Directors, and we would ask that you approve it.
Thank you. There are questions of staff? No questions, I'll move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 180-32.
I'll second it.
Discussion on the motion?
Yes, with any luck, they will be moving into the new place soon, and this won't last but a month or two.
Further discussion? Anyone?
Having formerly chaired this group, not chaired, but having formerly been the executive director of this group, I heartily approve of the rental and the fee. The building's about to go away, so I certainly don't see any reason to do a market research on it. I also want to thank Arts Herndon, because they bring in a lot more money to the town than we actually spend on them, and I appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Kaufman.
Arts are part of what the town does, it's analogous to the wonderful recreational program that we have here, and I think it's appropriate that the town support the arts, and I think the proposed lease goes a long way towards supporting the arts, and I support it.
I concur, it's a no-brainer, so if there's no further discussion, I will call the question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. Next up is ordinance 18033, to amend Chapter 46, Article 1, sections, all of these that are listed here in the code of the town of Herndon, to increase the threshold amount considered to be petit larceny?
Pettit.
Pettit larceny, all right. Once again, calling Lisi Gates for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In July 2018, the, a change that the General Assembly affected in its last session took place, increasing the amount, the value considered to be petty larceny from $200 to $500 took effect. This is just simply changing our four code sections to reflect that increased amount to $500. Petty, there's petty larceny and there's grand larceny. I think petty larceny is the little brother of grand larceny, so, although, you know, $200 isn't much these days, so increasing it by $300 to make it $500 was some, something definitely long overdue. This will allow the officers to charge under the local ordinances, and we would ask that you adopt the changes.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Ms. Friedrichs?
This isn't really something we have any, I mean, there isn't any reason not to do it, right? It's required.
No, in fact, there's every reason to do it, so we can continue to, our officers can continue to charge under the local ordinances and prosecute, our deputy town attorney can prosecute.
Then we have to do it.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance 18-0-33.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on the motion?
I want to thank staff and the police for several reasons, obviously, adjusting for inflation and things of that nature, but more importantly, by doing that, it, it helps in regards to punitive actions towards people that, you know, people make mistakes, and I, I think thresholds that are lifted a little bit are better for people. You know, growing up, you know, it's just, things can happen, and I, I think by raising this, it gives the police a little more authority in regards to having the leeway to do it, but more importantly, it's not as punitive, and I think that's, those are two important things, so I'm definitely for that.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Okay, and finally, Resolution 18G64, to award contract 1902 to Building Security Systems, and I'll call on the chief for the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council, you save the best for last, I see.
Always.
We're here to discuss a resolution to award a contract to C&amp;J Security for enhancement of building, building security systems. And just to give you an idea of where, how we got here, we had been, about a year and a half ago, we were assessing the security needs at the Herndon Police Department. During that time, we, we discovered that we had a system that was inadequate, and we have many deficiencies there that we sought to address. We, we submitted money, we submitted a proposal through the Capital Improvement Program to actually develop funds to address those needs. We actually put an RFP out in, on July 31st, request for proposal for building security, when that was advertised. The, after the October 10 presentations were done, we selected C&amp;J Security. During that time, right around that time, we also expanded the scope of that project to look at this building here, which is the Herndon Municipal Center, the council chambers themselves, and certainly the old town hall where our town attorney works. It was important to address those buildings for many reasons. Security, securing our workplaces for all of our town employees is of critical importance to us, and all you need to do is look around the news around the country and everywhere else today, see how important that is. There are many, many needs that need to be addressed in these buildings, you know, for security purposes, we're not going to go into the details of all of those needs now, but it is critical for us to look at those specific needs of all of the town employees that work here, not just those in the Herndon Police Department. C&amp;J also did a very good assessment for us in the process of looking at that, but based on the expansion of that project beyond the Herndon Police Department, and we do have funds allocated for Herndon's building at this time, we are requesting to award a contract to C&amp;J for that project.
Okay, questions for the chief? Mr. Kaufman, followed by the Vice Mayor.
So is this, is this proposal to, to study and assess the needs for security, or is it to actually effectuate the security measures?
It's, it's, it's to award a contract to a company to do those changes that we have already assessed over time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I was just gonna, I wanted to ask about the timing, and then I realized, I don't know if you want to disclose that, but do you have a sense on the timing of when the changes will be made?
It depends on a variety of factors. I know the, we are anxious to get our changes made, because we have fully identified those and we have money addressed. One of the reasons that we cannot move forward at the Herndon Police Department is because a contract has not been awarded, so we are ready to move and have been for, for quite some time. The, the changes over here, we have a building security team put in place, Tammy, John Irish, Tanya are on that team, we have been assessing needs here, we are discussing options that are best for the workplace and for the employees here. We have been in discussion, I have met with Mr. Ashton on a couple occasions to discuss options for that, but, but there are different parts of that project that will need to be more fully assessed and to determine the best way to move forward with that.
And if we approve this tonight, does that give you the ability to at least start with HPD right away?
That's correct.
Great, got it, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
And I just wanted to clarify that the reason this is on the agenda this evening is because it, it hit a threshold that required council action. This was something that was already in place and planned for, but it reached a threshold when we expanded, so that's why it requires council action instead of just a staff administrative approval, correct? Okay, just.
That's correct.
Right, thank you. Other questions? I guess that wasn't a question, I'm sorry, but figured someone might have that question. Okay, so then I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of 18G64.
I'll second that.
A discussion on motion?
Yeah, we did have a presentation on workplace security systems while we were at VML, I believe, we were both at it, and it's, it's an issue out there, and we do really need to make sure we're protecting our, our employees as well as people coming into the building.
Further discussion, Mr. McKenna?
I agree 100% with Ms. Olem. I think it's extremely important that people have a safe workplace environment, that's tantamount to anything that we do here, safety and security, and it's, it's needed. And also, you know, here at the dais as well, because you just, you never know. Some people, you know, it's just, we live in a world, unfortunately, where people are, they're not kind sometimes, and they can, they can take things to a level that, as we see day in and day out, things happen, and it's unfortunate, but it's tantamount to meeting everyone's safe on the dais and as employees of this town, so I'm all for it.
Further discussion, Ms. Friedrichs?
Yeah, I had a lot of questions about this, because we didn't have a work session in between, and I was a little startled, but I had the opportunity to chat with a number of members of council and with the, with the, what are you again?
Who's that guy?
And obviously, I was also at the Virginia Municipal League presentation on workplace violence with the other two council members, and yeah, we definitely need to make sure that our employees are taken care of, and the assessments that the employees have taken, I'm sure, will be very positive, so I support it.
There's nothing more important than the safety of our citizens and the people who, who work for us here in the town, and so I completely support this wholeheartedly, and thank you for the work you've done on it. I know it's been in the works for quite a while, a lot of assessment, I really appreciate it. So with no further discussion, I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Madam Mayor, seeing no further business, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and we stand adjourned at 9:09 PM. Thank you.